...stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a brief moment of silence in recognition of veterans and those who have passed. Thank you. Just want to remind everybody that tonight's meeting is being aired live and is being recorded, even though you can't see the cameras there in the room. And welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting. Counselor Suzer and Counselor Fitzgibbons, I received notice that they weren't able to be at tonight's meeting tonight. So I'm sure Counselor Loesch is on her way, so this is who we have tonight. So, moving on to the agenda, it's a fairly light agenda, depending on how many questions we have. We have minutes from our meeting on November 19th. If I can entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, there's a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Council President has no announcements. There are no proclamations. Citizens' open forum. Are there any citizens here that wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Anybody at all, please come up and take the microphone?
Good evening. Harry Bailey, Pleasant Street. I'm here in support of Item G, license transactions for the Summer Street Cafe. That would be my daughter. And right now, she would be here, but she's working. So that answers one question that everybody had, that the other businesses were never there. She works over 60 hours a week. So this will be her own business. She will be there. And I'm also here in support of Item L, Legislative Action, the Section A, the order for the transfer order for CPC funding for the Broad Street project. I am in support of that, because I'm a member of the CPC and past chair, so I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Anybody at all? Seeing none. Appointments. We have two this evening. A, Library Director, Mr. Jett T. Phillips.
Mr. President, Mr. Phillips is our selection for Library Director. He went through a rigorous application process, most recently from West Bridgewater, where he served as Assistant Library Director, has a great technical background, and a great background educating other librarians, so I encourage you to ratify his appointment.
I'm the Library Director. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to...
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, point or approve, seconded. Any discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome aboard, Mr. Phillips. Next, we have Historic District Commission appointment, Judith Gabriel, a reappointment.
Mr. President, I think everybody knows Judith Gabriel, so I would encourage you to reappoint her. She's a reappointment to the Historic District Commission.
Any questions from the councilors to the Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dunn, are there any required professions required to be on the Historic Commission? Or is it just suggested?
I can take a look. I believe that there's a suggestion that there be somebody who lives or works within the district, and then I think there's also, I don't know, I don't believe it's a requirement, but a desire to have an architect.
Do we have, is there an architect on the commission? Well, anyway, I would urge you to look into that, and it would seem worthwhile to have an architect. I mean, I know Mrs. Gabriel, you know, dedicated, member of that commission for a while, so I'm in favor. Just something good for thought the next time, I guess.
Good point.
Any other comments or comments? And a motion?
Moved.
Motion is a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for Miss Gabriel for continuing your work on the Historic District Commission. Hearings, the time being 7:35. Order FY 2001-9, laying out and accepting a private wake, Colonial Drive. At a meeting held on October 16th, 2019, the Planning Board voted unanimously not to recommend acceptance. On October 25th, 2019, the Community and Economic Development Committee voted 3 to 0 not to recommend acceptance. This measure has been duly filed with the town clerk, advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website for a public hearing, and may be finally considered at the conclusion of this hearing. So I will open the hearing at 7:37.
Mr. President, I'll also point out that Counselor Rushton has...
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that, yeah. Mr. Counselor Rushton has left the room because he lives on Colonial Drive, does, certainly does not want any appearance of a conflict, so... Anyway, the hearing being open, is the petitioner here or wishes to make a presentation regarding this order? Or would the Town Manager like to talk about this, or...
Mr. President, I can speak briefly about this. Originally, the Planning Board and the Community and Economic Development Committee opted not to support this application because there were a number of items that still were left unresolved or uncompleted. And essentially, the recommendation of staff, both the Planning Board and, I believe, Community and Economic Development Committee had decided not to support it. Those items have been taken care of to the satisfaction of the respective parties, respective department heads, and so there is no objection at this point to accepting Colonial Drive.
Are there any general questions from the public regarding this order, this street acceptance? Anybody here from the public wishes to ask any general questions? Seeing none. Is there anybody here from the general public that wishes to speak in favor of this order? Anybody here from the general public wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none. Is there anybody here from the public that wishes to speak in opposition to this order? Anybody here from the public that wishes to speak in opposition of laying out and accepting this street, Colonial Drive? Seeing none. I'll now open it up to questions from our councilors, but before we do, could I just ask the Town Manager one question? I know the advertisement, the advertisement says that we will hold a public hearing to consider Order FY 2001-9. I see that the petitioner is not here. Do you think it's, he didn't want to be here, or do you think is this some sort of scheduling conflict? Or should we proceed without him? Do you think there's a reason to hold it back, or what do you think we should do?
I don't think there's any reason not to proceed.
Okay.
The petitioner is notified of the meeting and has every right to attend, and if they don't attend, then certainly you can go ahead with the hearing. You can also, if you opt, you can continue the hearing. You can also close the hearing and defer a vote. So that's really up to you.
Okay, I'll open it up to questions from the council. Mr. Wood?
So on the face of it, it looks like everyone did not recommend that we move forward on this, and yet, on the next last page, the town engineer is making a recommendation in an email sent to our Council Clerk, Ann, but I don't see it copied to Town Manager or others. And again, on the face of it, it looks as though our departments aren't coordinated with how we, how problems are fixed and when it comes up to the Planning Board, et cetera. Now, my understanding is that the Planning Board has only a certain amount of time after the application comes in to recommend or not recommend the action, and that there were some deficiencies on the road. And according to the letter from November 25th, those deficiencies have been fixed, and it sounds like the town department heads are happy with it. But I'm just wondering if there's a different process or an item like this that comes before the council that could follow to have either the Planning Board continue the discussion if there are deficiencies or some other actions, so that we're not getting a "not recommend" from one, and then an email recommending from the other, because to the public, it might look confusing as to why we would say, yes, we would approve this. And so I was going to ask our Town Attorney, Mr. Rollins, a question about that, but I'll ask, if I may, through you, to the Town Manager, if there's, if there's a way to smooth out this process, so that the next time a street acceptance comes across, that all the deficiencies are fixed during the course of the Planning Board vote, et cetera.
Counselor Wood brings up a very good point. We've been changing, based upon advice of our council, our Town Attorney, we've been altering the process by which we accept streets. So as part of that new process, I will suggest to him that he incorporate some sort of process so that we don't have Planning Board giving a negative recommendation without, without any further guidance, just in order to meet that deadline, Planning Board deadline. My suggestion to him will probably be that the Planning Board, if they're otherwise inclined to accept the road, then accept the road pending the completion of the list of items that are outstanding. So I will recommend that certainly to him as inclusion in part of the process.
If I can do a follow-up?
Yep.
So maybe the process needs to be reversed. Maybe the engineering, highway, and water need to get, you know, preapproval before the Planning Board hears the item.
That would be ideal.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Columbo?
I can speak to that issue. The Community and Economic Development Committee, and I believe the Planning Board also was generally in favor, except for the reservations by the town engineer. And perhaps our recommendation not to recommend, you know, as we see it in the bottom of the order, could say contingent, I don't know how it would have been phrased differently, but there might be some note that the reason for the recommendation not to accept was the reservations, and the implication being, once those, once the town engineer satisfied them, then we are. So it's kind of a conditional sort of disapproval.
I just think the town had come to, it's within district when they come asking for this to be accepted, so before any ordinance gets created, we have to make sure we have all those support from any office or the council. And that's not what happened. It got pushed through, and then conversations happened after. And then here we are in December. So, lesson learned.
And I, like, I think the Town Manager said, the Planning Board vote took place prior to that November 25th email that everything was taken care of. So in the Planning Board by statute, I think, has a certain amount of time where they need to take a vote, whether it's up or down, and they took a down vote based, I think, what you're saying is on the things that weren't done, which have been done according to the email of November 5th. So it sounds to me like everything is satisfied. Go ahead.
Thanks. I think it just goes to the organizational character of the town. So we have this issue. There was a business that applied for something here in town. I won't say what it is, but they got conflicting information, and they had to bring in legal services. It'd be nice if there was a liaison in the town that brought a builder or business or even, you know, residents through the process that needs to be followed. And in this case, you know, you know you're going to be for the Planning Board, and you need to have engineering look at the things that the Planning Board is going to decide on, right? And if, it just gets it prepared for the meeting. I don't think that happens.
I know. The minute we approve it, and then we're on the hook to plow it. And we only meet twice a month, and snow fell today.
Yes.
Yes, the case.
If I may, I would just add that this particular developer is no stranger to doing business in the town.
Right. Any other comments from the councilors? Question. I will now close the hearing at 7:46 PM. Hearing is now closed. I'll...
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion? I'm sorry, Ann. Yep? Oh, I see. We need to take, we need to make an entertaining motion that we make, that we, that we find that the laying out is required by the common convenience and necessity. We need a motion to actually lay out the street. And then we, and then we take a vote to accept it. There's a motion, and there's a second. Any discussion on laying out the common convenience and necessity? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that vote has been taken. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the Order FY 2001-9.
Vote again.
And seconded.
Second.
Okay. This does not require a roll call vote. It does, yes, it does require a roll call vote. So this motion, there's a second.
Yes.
Yes.
George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
He's not here.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Seven in favor, none against.
Seven in favor. So the road has been accepted. So we might have to spray some sand down there tomorrow morning.
Did you say seven in favor? Only six of us here.
Moving on, Mr. Rushton can come back in if he wants to. I don't know if he can hear me out there. Do we have microphones in the hallway? Here he is.
He's drunk.
Okay, moving on to item G, license transactions. Petition P two zero one nine zero two eight, common, new common victory's license. Bridgewater Brunch, Inc., doing business as Summer Street Cafe, one ten Summer Street. Entertain a motion to approve the licensed transaction.
Second.
There's a motion to approve, and there's a second. Any discussions from the councillors? Mr. Wood?
I appreciate that there's a new business going into my district. It replaces one that wasn't open as often as people would want. It sounds like from Mr. Bailey and others that this will be a thriving business. So our next challenge is to figure out the shared parking model for downtown, so that a business in that spot, which is tight for parking, has the ability to attract the customers that I'm sure want to get there. Thank you.
Foot trap.
Right.
Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I wish her all the best, and I'm sure I'll be in there to sample some of the things that she's got. Presentations, we have no presentations tonight. Town manager report, we have a few items on here. We'll start with the standing item of the Mitchell School update. Mr. Dutton, do you have any update on that? Has the ground been broken yet?
Mr. President, I do not have much of an update on that, other than to just remind folks that generally, the Mitchell School Building Committee meetings are held on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, right here in the council's chambers.
Let me ask you a question about, is, is the committee, does the committee have a full complement of members on it?
The committee, there is no limit to the number of people that can be on it. We have just appointed, I've just appointed three additional folks. If there is a councillor that is interested, that is, that is qualified, not qualified, but able to serve, I would certainly forward that along, so.
So right now, there is no councillor sitting on that committee.
Correct.
I, I think, I'd like to see someone step forward if they're interested in serving on that, because this will be a two, two-year project, so. All right.
So anybody that might be interested, just feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to, happy to discuss that.
Next item is the new education funding law that Counselor Fitzgibbons put, asked her to speak on, and I know there was a $1.5 billion commitment from the state into public education. I'm assuming that's what he's talking about. He wants to know, how does Bridgewater fare?
Well, I think the, I think councillor, my understanding is, from my discussion with him, Counselor Fitzgibbons was wondering how we were gonna fare, because there's a lot of, what I will, what I now know is misinformation out there, thinking that there's a whole lot of money coming to the district, which, which may or may not end up happening. But the governor signed the new law last week, and really, the objective is to close what are referred to as the achievement gaps, and, and make some substantial policy changes in, in how school funding operates. So with a particular emphasis on low-income students as it pertains to that opportunity gap. So the law does call for an additional $1.5 billion in spending over the next seven years. That, that's the good news. The bad news is, there's no funding associated with the bill the governor signed, and a lot of the projections are based upon very optimistic revenue projections over the, over those seven years. So, so we'll see what happens there. The, the law actually comes about as a result of a lawsuit filed back in June. Lawsuit was Masadi versus Peiser, Peiser being the Secretary of Elementary and Secondary Education. So over that seven years, the law will address four general areas: special ed, employee health insurance, educational programs for low-income students, and educational programs for English as a second language learners. So that's, those are the four real targets of, of the bill. The district would be required to prepare plans detailing the strategies that they'll use to close those achievement gaps. The first plans are due in this year, this year coming up, 2020. The law also establishes in, for chapter seventy, a $30 per student floor for the minimum new annual aid increase. That would calculate to about 160,000, roughly 160,000 for the Bridgewater area and district. But last year, our increase was about $770,000. So, so that provision probably won't affect us a whole lot. So obviously, the impact's gonna vary from district to district. There, as I mentioned, there is no appropriation, currently no appropriation. The appropriation to, to fund the bill will come through the budget process. Governor obviously files his budget, and we'll have to figure out how, how to fund the commitment for FY twenty twenty-one. The, what else can I tell you about it? So just to give you a little bit of perspective, just in terms of numbers, Bridgewater spends about five and a half million above what's referred to as required local contribution. And so where our school budget for the regional district, our assessment is about, about 28,700, and, and the required local contribution is twenty, our required local contribution is 23, a little over 23 million. So, so we're, we do okay there. Local, chapter seventy-eight last year increased over FY nineteen by about 3.61. As I mentioned, about, that was about a $770,000 increase from FY nineteen to FY twenty. So, so the, the new law is, is essentially a policy statement, which is probably why it got unanimous support in the legislature, and the governor signed it. The challenge will come, I think, in funding the, the, the first year and thereafter, and then also in, in the districts, all districts' ability to generate a, a plan to, to close those, those gaps, where they find those gaps. But again, I'm not anticipating any kind of windfall for the town. I'd be very pleasantly surprised if we get a windfall, but given the, the focus on those four subject areas, there are probably gateway cities that are, that are more in line, you know, more, more aligned with those, trying to, trying to solve those, those issues, so. But we will see what happens. But anybody trying to tell folks how much Bridgewater's getting out of it is probably premature at this point. So that's, that's really all I had on, on the new education funding law, but happy to answer questions if I know the answers.
Any questions from the councillors?
So you've answered a lot of the questions, because I was gonna ask about the source of funding. I read through the bill itself and couldn't find a source of funding. And, and then there's several links out there that say, and I think this is where the misperception is, there's several links out that say the results of the bill for fiscal twenty over, or twenty-one over twenty, or whatever year we're in, is like an $800,000 change. And what I was gonna ask you, which now is, is pointless, is, given that we would expect chapter seventy money to increase by a certain percentage anyway, what would the delta be between that? But you've said, basically, it's a policy, and that there's not funding right now behind, behind that effort, right?
That's my understanding.
So how, so I guess over the next couple of months, during our budget process, everybody here would be interested in knowing what changes and what the governor's budget and, and the state's budget is looking at that, and what our real changes would be.
I think that'll be an indication, the governor's budget obviously will be the first indication that we'll have as to what, what he intends for our district in particular.
And, and on that note, I think that next month, at the Mass Municipal Conference, the governor usually comes out and speaks, and the tone of his speech for that conference is about the budget. So I'm sure we'll get an indication from him as to what his priorities will be, or how much local aid will increase and so forth, some, sometime near the middle or end of January. Anybody else have any questions regarding this issue? Thank you for the update. Broad Street update is on here, too. I don't know what piece of Broad Street he wanted an update on, whether it's the, the amount of money we're gonna approve later on, or the.
No.
No.
Or the dark hole on the left-hand side.
I think the dark hole is what his intent was, and I can tell you that we've had no, no contact, no update since my last report, so.
Is there any way we can kind of get him to clean the graffiti off the buildings, at least? I mean, we did have him do that before. I know the circle with the X is gonna stay there, I guess, but there's more, it seems like there's more and more graffiti every time. I mean, the snow cover looks, makes it look a little better now, but anyway.
I will see if there's a way to get the graffiti off. That's particularly hideous.
Anybody else on that issue? Next issue is update on Department of Transportation's discussion reference engine braking restrictions. Counselor Chase asked for an update on that?
Yes, and we did have a discussion with Mast dot, which I may have referenced in another meeting. And let me, let's see, I'll quote exactly what, what they gave me in a follow-up writing email. Mast dot does not, does not restrict the use of engine brakes on state roadways, because engine brakes are now, now a required safety function for newer commercial vehicles, and their design and installation is regulated by the federal government. As such, any state law or local ordinance prohibiting or restricting their use would not be enforceable by the police. For these reasons, Massachusetts does not currently have any state law restricting the use of engine brakes. So I have to admit that my original understanding was that Jake brakes, as they're called, were being phased out of new vehicles, but I guess I was completely incorrect. Now they're designed and installed as a requirement in new vehicles, so. But where that places us, we, as, as you probably have noticed in many towns around us, there are signs that say, no Jake brakes. We could, we could install those signs as just an indication that, that we don't want Jake brakes used in those locations, but probably not an enforceable, well, definitely not an enforceable, enforceable by the police. So I'm not sure where to go with, with that at this point, now that, now that we know this. That's, that's what I, I have on that one, but happy, happy to take any suggestions or comments.
Mr. Chase, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that, Mr. Dutton, and thank you for the update. I think that I rather feared that, that might be the nature of the response we'd have from, from the state officials. And I know that you previously have expressed that you would not be inclined to urge the placement of signage, insofar as there's not an ability to enforce. I don't know if there's any other relief that we could provide to the residents. Again, particularly, this arose in connection with the Flag Street, which is increasingly a, a very heavily-traveled thoroughfare for construction vehicles. Obviously, you know, we have a noise ordinance, but I, I don't think that's really applicable, but certainly, I'd like to just consider other opportunities for us to restrict that type of intrusion, that type of noise, and to the extent that anyone on the council may have suggestions in that regard, or anyone in the community, I'd be certainly interested in pursuing it and helping to alleviate the problem that besieges some of those residents. Thank you.
No, I do appreciate that, and thank you. One of the things I can do, we, we have a fairly good relationship with the trucking companies that we know of, that do business in Bridgewater, and, and I'm certainly willing to reach out and see if I can get them to ask their subcontractors, or ask their employees to, to ease up on, on using those brakes. I can certainly do that, that's.
Well, perhaps, if you, if you would, I think that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Columbotes?
One point might be, if, if trucks are exceeding the speed limit, they'll need to brake more, so perhaps enforcing speed limits would have a positive effect on reduction, you know, reducing the need for Jake brakes in the first place. That's one angle, I guess.
Mr. Loesch?
I can, I was looking for the street name in West Bridgewater, but they have a sign that says, no Jake brakes on the road, and then people don't go down the road with that type of brakes. I'm not sure if we can make a sign and restrict travel on that road that way, but I know it's been done, and I don't have one, but I travel down that road and see that every single day.
Yeah, we could say please.
We could add please.
That's, there are worse things.
Right.
So that's, I mean, if West Bridgewater can restrict traffic from that cut-through going from one oh six to, I can't think of the name of that road either, because I don't live in West Bridgewater, but that other, that other, like, busy street when you come up Hakamuck, that might help traffic, and we could pass some type of zoning or some type of ordinance for that road specifically, and see if we can just be done. That's just an assumption. I'm not sure what West Bridgewater had to go through to make that sign happen.
Very good, we'll do what we can do. Moving on to High Street Dam and Bridge Replacement.
Mr. President, I wanted to give the council just a little bit of an update on where we stand. This is project, possible project being spearheaded by the State Department of Environmental Restoration in conjunction with the Nature Conservancy. So, and, and I realized, I have realized that the only permitting process for, for this project, if it were to continue, would be with the Conservation Commission, and I do think it's a sizable enough, certainly a sizable enough project that, that it deserves more public airing. So I've asked both Nature Conservancy and DER, and, and some of the other interested parties to, when the time is right, after the next, next engineering report is submitted, to be able to release that, and then, and then hold a public forum, so that everybody can understand what the possible, probably likely, project will be. So this all started, as the council may or may not know, the High Street Dam is, also known as Jenkins Dam, is not a town-owned dam or piece of property, so that is actually owned privately. The private landowner has expressed interest to the state in decommissioning the dam, because the dam provides certain liabilities. Certainly, for those that remember the floods back in 2010 and back in the mid-two thousands, know how unsafe dams can be. So the, the dam owner in this case has asked DER and the Nature Conservancy to come in and, and give some different options on, on his, his, what, what he could possibly do. As part of that initial study, they quickly realized that the, the High Street Bridge, which is town-owned and is quite old, and is not really a bridge, it's actually a series of four culverts, but they realized that, that that bridge is actually currently undersized in order to pass floodwaters, but certainly, if the, the dam were removed, there would be adverse impacts to the bridge that would require that the bridge be rebuilt. So that's really how the town has become a little bit involved in, in this, at least on the periphery at this point. in this, at least on the periphery at this point. The original initial study that was done about a year ago, and I believe it's on our website, but the original study did determine that there would be impacts as far upstream as the War Memorial Park in West Bridgewater after a dam removal. So there are some concerns about that and what impact that that dam removal would have on the upstream side, not so much on the downstream side. So removing the dam is far less costly than repairing it, which really is not our issue per se. But a dam repair and a fish ladder reconstruction would cost in the neighborhood about $2.3 million with ongoing maintenance. Dam removal, according to the estimates generated by this, the initial engineering report, was about $800,000 with no ongoing maintenance costs. That all sounds great, except with a dam removal, you then are required, essentially required, to replace the High Street Bridge at a cost of a significant expense that's not determined at this point. So that is really where it stands now. You, the council, had approved an appropriation that was designed to incorporate the road reconstruction from Main Street down to the High Street Bridge as part of this overall engineering. And we decided to join that effort because we do have major problems on that stretch of High Street, major drainage problems. And there are conflicts with water, sewer, drainage, and gas that need to be resolved on that stretch. So we did incorporate that piece of High Street into the engineering that they are currently doing. And as soon as that piece of the report is finalized, I'll certainly share it, and we'll make sure that it's publicly accessible on the website. So that's really where it stands at this point. I do sense that there's not enough public understanding of what's involved with the dam removal. It's not just as simple as removing the dam. Dam removal would also sort of trigger the bridge replacement. One of the major objectives of both the Nature Conservancy and DER, as well as the federal, several federal agencies, one of their major concerns is paying for a bridge replacement. Obviously, that's a town road. We don't, we're not in the position to allocate, you know, $3 million, $4 million for a bridge replacement. So they've been actually very helpful in identifying funding sources for us, capital funding sources for bridge replacements like this one. So it's rather particular, but there are some federal funds available for these types of projects. So we're looking at those right now. We've got a deadline, actually, next week in order to submit an application if we qualify. So we are, well, actually DER is doing most of the work on that, but we're making sure that we follow that deadline to the extent that it means some significant capital funding. And that's sort of a basic update on that project, but happy to answer any questions about it.
Anybody have any questions regarding that? On the next meeting in two weeks, if you have something you want the town manager to address, you can bring it up now, or between now and the next agenda goes forward, you can just let Ian know you'd like someone for the topic. Mr. Wood?
I'd just like to hear about the resource, limited resources we have for snow removal. I know the town posted something on its Facebook account this week, yesterday, I think it was. So I think the council would like to hear more about the resource limitation there.
Moving on to discussion items, there are none. Committee reports. Are there any committees that wish to report on their activity? Ms. Loesch?
Yes, so the Strategic Planning Team Committee met yesterday to review the topics and suggestions that we received from the council, and we received yours. What we are going to do is create, get the template that we've already passed as a council for the town manager review. We did that about three years ago, created a template and a packet of what should be done and how the questions should look. So I'm going to work with our amazing clerk to find that, to ensure that all of you have that in your inboxes to review. We'll be asking you to go through the process. We'll be talking about it again at our next meeting. And then we're hoping that we can have an executive session at that time to discuss, and then have a final discussion between the council president and the town manager in early January. In addition to that, we need to start thinking about goals. As we wrap up 2019, we have to start thinking about 2020. So by the end of February, we would like to have the goals by our February meeting to be something to be presented and worked out between the council and the town manager. So we're just thinking about that timeline. If there's things that you would like to see, please start thinking about that, sharing it with our committee, because we are going to be holding ourselves to this timeline to ensure that we are moving forward.
Very good. Any other committees wish to report? Mr. Wood?
Sure. I'll give two. Rules and procedures met last week, I think it was. And we've wrapped up the proposed amendments for the council rules, so we can talk about those a little bit later. Budget and finance met tonight. Previously, you'll see that Order 33 was recommended, but tonight we also recommended 29, 34, 35, and 36. Thank you.
Okay. Any other reports? Moving on to Item L, Legislation for Action. Order FY 20029, Transfer Order CPC Funding for Broad Street Property Purchase. At their meeting held on October 28, 2019, the Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval. On 11/2019, the Community Preservation Committee voted 5 to 0 to approve this measure. The Budget and Finance Committee met 12/3/19 and will provide the disposition to the full council. This measure has been, this measure may be finally voted on this evening. And as Counselor Wood has said, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 this evening to approve it. Mr. Wood, did you want to have a few comments?
I'll make a motion to approve first.
There's a motion to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion? I'll recognize, Counselor Wood.
Thank you. This work probably started about six years ago. I learned that the property was for sale on Broad Street. Many people may not know where this is. So as you're traveling up 18 north past McDonald's and Imperial Kitchen, there's wooded area on the right before you get to the lights. And that's five acres of wooded property. That five acres leads into the 72 acres of Styles &amp; Hart, which is a park that the town already owns and has, there's a lot of really nice features in there. There's a couple ponds. Mr. Bailey has cut back the trails a couple times. The Boy Scouts have cut back trails. It's really a gem of a resource, and it's right in the heart of downtown Bridgewater. I'm really excited about this plan because, as I said, it started about six years ago. I was introduced to Lincoln Andrews, who represents the Styles &amp; Hart family. It's his family. And we started talking about the property and their desire, his desire, to work with the town and make this happen. The family trust has more than 20 members in it. The trust has more than 10 properties in it. And they had two lawyers working for a couple of years to work with that group and pull this piece of property out. Finally, we got to the point where we could get an offer, an appraisal. The CPC met a week ago, two weeks ago. I sat in the meeting with them, and we talked about the property. It's got a lot of great features. It's just hidden. It's nearly impossible to get to. I walked the property twice when we were considering to buy the Calther property. I wanted to understand what 72 acres felt like. So you can gain access through the gated area across from the dry cleaner. There's a break in the, there's a break in the guardrail further up. That's the five acres we're talking about tonight. And then on High Street, I think it was the Boy Scouts did a trail up there with a marker, but there's no parking. There's no parking there. There's no parking on 18. There's almost no parking, or there is no parking at the gate. You can park down Roche Brothers and walk up, but there's a safety factor in there. So my vision back then that we talked about was obtain the five acres, open up the guardrail, put in a simple parking lot, like a gravel parking lot, something very natural. And then that's a road that leads back into the heart of the park. We talked months ago about Park Stewarts. This is why we need a Park Stewart, is to maintain this sort of thing. So, and I will give a lot of credit to Harry also. We were chatting about that opening up of the park, and he's already done research on how to, there's some terrain access that allows wheelchairs to get down into the park. So you have ADA access on top of everything else. The, as you said, there's been, as you see, there's overwhelming spread. I'm really excited about this because once that parking area is finished, it becomes like the Carver Pond, or the Tuckerwood, or some of the other areas where we have parking, we have access, and people can go in and relax within, you know, a nice, quiet environment. And when we talk about Broad Street and the whole area there, as we develop things in that area, it becomes really a central district park. You know, it's that close. So I hope that the council will support this tonight. It's been a long journey, probably six years, a lot of phone calls, a lot of work we couldn't talk about on camera because things were uncertain. But it's got a lot of support recently, and I hope everybody supports it here. Thank you.
Mr. George?
Yep, through you to the town manager. Just, I think this is, so everyone understands it too. So even though the purchase price is $475, really the cost to the town is going to be $149,000 odd, correct?
That's approximately correct, yep.
Okay.
So we do receive roughly $375,000 worth of grant funding from the state once the purchase is complete.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. I failed to mention that. It's a very important part. Two-thirds of it's going to be paid for by the state.
Yep.
Ms. Loesch?
I have a quick question. Have we talked to some of the businesses that are right there, where they might have ample parking that isn't being utilized?
Have you tried to walk the park? You can't get near it. There is no business near the access point.
Okay. So like Imperial Kitchen's too far down?
Right.
And, okay.
It's walking 18. You don't want to walk that. It's a long walk, too, when it's on 18.
But hopefully someday we'll develop the Town River Landing, and that would be additional parking, because they could connect and become a bunch bigger area of people to have recreational and canoe launches and all that. So it's a good start. Excellent start. Mr. Columbotes?
Through you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, so how well assured are we of getting this state grant funding?
We have the contract sitting on my desk. So as soon as this gets voted, I can sign the contract.
So it's there. We just need to kind of jump through the right hoops.
Correct.
Thank you.
Very good. Seeing no other questions, there is a motion and a second, although this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Moving on to Order B, Order FY 20033, Acceptance of a Gift, Bridgewater Savings Bank. At their meeting held on 11/19/19, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 to 1 to recommend approval. The Finance Committee voted to recommend approval at their meeting held on 11/25/19. This measure may be finally considered this evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve the gift.
So moved.
And there's a second? Is there any discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
You have to abstain, right?
Abstain.
Okay. So do you want me to run the vote?
She's going to run the vote. It's a roll call vote.
A roll call. I do have a question, though.
Oh.
Through you to the town manager. So $2,500 stated purpose is for a mailbox, lockbox, outside of the Academy Building for tax bills, things of that nature. It's $2,500, enough money to have one installed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Abstain.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Six in favor, none against.
Next item, Order FY 20034, Transfer Order Collective Bargaining Agreement Obligation, United Steel Workers. At their meeting held on 11/25/19, the Finance Committee voted to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee met 11/3/19 and will provide the disposition to the full council. This measure may be finally considered pending disposition from the Budget and Finance Committee. And as stated earlier by Counselor Wood, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 2 to 0 this evening to approve this order. And notice that Counselor Rushton has left the room for this vote. Any, I'll entertain a motion to, entertain a motion.
Second.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Any discussion on this order?
I'll just say that we, the Finance Director was in our meeting, too, so we get a sense of where these numbers are coming from and the next. So we read through the contracts and the obligations. It's a pretty good model, so hopefully everybody will support this.
I believe they add up.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Six in favor, none against.
Item D, Order FY 20035, Transfer Order Collective Bargaining Agreement Obligation, the Bridgewater Firefighters Association. At their meeting held on 11/25/19, the Finance Committee voted to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee met on 11/3/19 and will provide the disposition to the full council. This measure may be finally considered pending disposition from the Budget and Finance Committee, and as stated before by Counselor Wood, Budget and Finance Committee met this evening and voted 2 to 0 to recommend approval. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, and there's a second. Any discussion on approving this bargaining agreement? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Six in favor, none against.
Acting under Item E, Order FY 20036, Transfer Order Collective Bargaining Agreement Obligation, Bridgewater Administrators Association. At their meeting held on 11/25/19, the Finance Committee voted to recommend approval. The Budget and Finance Committee met on 11/3/19 and will provide the disposition to the full council. This measure may be finally considered pending disposition from the Budget and Finance Committee. And as stated earlier, the Budget and Finance Committee did vote 2 to 0 this evening to recommend approval. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, and there's a second to approve this agreement. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wood?
Given Mr. Fitzgibbon's absence, and he would probably raise this question, through you to the town manager, can you explain the step before our committee meetings for the overlay surplus?
Yes. Overlay surplus is money, essentially money that's set aside outside of your budget process on a yearly basis to fund abatements and so forth, or tax title properties and so forth. So once that year has passed and the outstanding obligations for the year, the outstanding monies due us are resolved, overlay becomes surplus. So it's not necessary to set aside anymore for a particular year. And so the assessors release that overlay, and once it's released, it's available to spend. So it's taxpayer money that's set aside outside of the budget process to cover mostly abatements. Once those years have gone by and the abatement window is gone, and that money is not otherwise obligated, then the assessors can release it, and it becomes available to spend.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding this? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against.
Item M, Old Item M, old business. We have A, Ordinance FY19007, the creation of a review committee. The Rules and Procedures Committee voted 3 to 0 at their meeting held on 11/26/19 to recommend to table indefinitely and include change in proposed ordinance FY2003. This measure may not be finally voted this evening, as it requires advertising prior to adoption. I'll entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to table the measure.
I'll second it.
There's a motion to table, and a second, table indefinitely, or just table? I guess it doesn't matter.
Same thing.
Any discussion?
So I'll just repeat what you said, which is, when the Rules and Procedures Committee met for the amendments to the rules, we included this as a standing committee as part of the rules. So this is, this happened before then, so it's, it's a great idea, and I think we've solved for that within the, within the amendments to the rules and procedures, rules of the council.
Okay. All those in favor of tabling this? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this has been tabled. New business. Ordinance, we have A, Ordinance FY2003, general ordinance, Town Council adoption of amendments to the rules and procedures document. It's in your packet, I believe. If council votes to amend this, Town Council adoption, which was Councilor Wood. I guess tonight, is tonight that we would get a presentation on this, or do we send it, should we refer this out, or does it need to be referred out?
So if we can talk about procedure for a minute?
Sure.
So the rules themselves have been in committee for quite a while now. I don't know, a year, six months. They've gone through several edits, and we've had multiple people review them. Hopefully, everybody here had a chance to look at them. We did our final recommendation last week on, on the changes. So one of the procedures we could follow tonight, and I'm hoping that everyone is agreeable to, is if we adopt the amendments into the, into the rules tonight, we can then send the, we have to go to advertisement. We could then send the document to advertisement with the amendments that are in. There's really no need to send it back to committee, because the committee's already worked through all the pieces. If someone here has a specific change they want to make, then during the amendment process, we could, we could discuss that. We also had asked for feedback a while ago, I don't remember exactly when, and I don't think we had, we had our own feedback and several others, but nothing, nothing major changed from the, the text changes that you see embedded into the document tonight.
So I move to approve the amendments?
I'll second this.
There's a motion to recommend and approve the amendments as presented, and there's a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendments?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it's now, the amendments have been adopted, so we can't do anything more tonight.
But we can run to, we can send to advertising.
Send it to advertising.
So I make a motion to send this to advertising.
Second.
Any discussion on sending this to advertising? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
E, Order FY20038, ratification, contract ratification, ASME. I'll recommend to refer this to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Order FY20039, ratification, contract ratification, library. I recommend that we refer this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order FY20040, transfer order funding of ASME contract settlement. I recommend to refer this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
Second.
I mean...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. FY20041, transfer order funding of the library contract settlement. I recommend to refer this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Transfer order FY20042, funding of non-union personnel. I would recommend we refer this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Order FY20043, construction vehicle restriction on Wally Kruger Way. This is presented by Councilor Wood and Councilor Souza.
I'll make a motion to move this to public safety.
I'll second for discussion.
There's a motion, and there's a second to move, move this and refer this to public safety. Mr. George?
I'm gonna probably go through you, probably to the town attorney for clarification. So I understand the rationale behind this. But this is also, I think, specifically connected to the Mitchell School project. Is this something that the planning board would have to take in consideration in regards to the approval of the plan and the access to the site? Because, again, understanding the rationale behind it, are we in a position to actually make the decision, basically for the planning board saying they're not allowed to access the site from Wally Kruger Way?
This is the first time I'm actually seeing this, so I think we should bring this up at another meeting, so I have an opportunity to look at this. And this is the first time it's even crossed my desk, so.
Okay. Because I, I'm doing this specifically for clarification.
Yep.
So that if we move forward, and it does get approved, we don't have an issue with the planning board coming back to us saying, "Well, now for the project to go forward, we can't restrict all the construction vehicles to South Street."
Right.
Ms. Loesch?
Sorry. And if I ever remember from many of the meetings, this road is going to be repaired, and it's going to become an exit for buses. So if they're not allowed to fix the road or be on it, then how? Like a chicken and an egg, how are we going to be able to use it to fix it?
There'll be, there'll certainly be periods of the construction phase that they'll have to come in through South Street. But not all, well, go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Through you, to Mr. Dutton. Mr. Dutton said a discussion with the project manager already, if you could clarify what that discussion was about?
The, sure, the project manager actually had indicated to me that he was already contemplating adding, adding language to the contract documents that would restrict the use of Wally Kruger Way. So I think they're already being somewhat attentive to the seniors that, that use the senior center down there. And I think that's, that's sort of the objective, is to not adversely impact. Obviously, to Councilor Loesch's point, when it gets to the point where they're redoing the road, then there's obviously going to be equipment in there. But I think the intent of this is to prevent, you know, the dusty trucks filled with debris from, from exiting out that, that direction.
And that's why that exception's...
But there'll be, in my opinion, and I have no problem referring it to public safety, if that's where we want to go. But I think there's the same adverse effect for the residents that live on, on Winter Street, South Street, Cottage Street, if that's where the, the truck's got to cut, cut through somewhere, coming from Middle Borough, or, or 104, or Route 18 North. So, you know, we, we have always been very critical of trucks going down Flag Street in a residential area, and here we are now directing a construction. I understand there's a construction project that's going to go on there, but I don't know. We'll have further discussion of this later. I'm, I'm thinking, yeah, we're trying to protect one section, but we're going to adversely affect another section of town. It's, it's, who wins?
And just to clarify, just to clarify, Councilor George's question, now that I've had an opportunity to read what the order actually is, is your question whether or not it presents legal issues in terms of, by having this order, are you impeding upon the planning board's ability to properly, you know, form the site, or make determinations about the construction of the site?
Exactly.
So, so long as the order goes through prior to the planning board making determinations, no, because you certainly can make the legislation, and then they're going to have to adjust by what the town's legislation is. I, I see there being a contradictory problem if it's happening simultaneously, and the planning board has made a determination that then this contradicts, right? So that, that's where I, just from a legal aspect, that's where I see there being a problem.
Okay.
The practical aspects are obviously up to you all to, to decide.
I think we want the trucks to come in through Wally Kruger Way, in my opinion. But anyway, we'll, we'll have that discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Columbotus?
Can I just, through you, ask, Mr. Wood, what was the concern? There is parking net right next to the, to the senior center, right? So if you're coming through, crossing that road, and continuing on to the Mitchell site, if you're parking next to the building, you're not going to have pedestrians there, right? I guess if they spill over into the north side of that parking lot, then you'd have pedestrians crossing the path of construction vehicles. I could see that as a concern. I'm not sure that's, would really be manifest. But I'd like to have clarification on that. I'd also like to hear from the clerk of the works as to, one downside of enforcing, implementing such an order is to increase costs. Your bids would come in higher, because they've got to take another 20 minutes to get a truck in and out. So I'd like to hear from the project manager.
So I don't understand how you can assume it's a higher cost, because you can't use a road that doesn't exist yet. But have you talked to any seniors?
Pardon me?
Have you talked to any seniors? The senior center has a new director. They plan to have active programs. You can't have 18-wheelers hauling debris in and out of, and seniors tend to walk a little slower, drive a little slower. You can't have trucks going in and out of that senior center all day long while programs are going on with, with that activity. We just talked about jake breaks and all that. I understand that there's other residents in other roads. But I'm, I'm thinking in terms of, you know, supporting our seniors in this project at the same time that we're supporting our children in this project. And it, and South Street has a, has a viable access point to, to create the construction zone.
Ms. Loesch?
Yeah, to, to follow up on Mr. Columbotus's point, yeah, I would just like to understand what we're trying to stop, besides the noise of a truck.
The traffic itself.
And we know how many trucks are going to be going back and forth.
No, we don't.
At times. So we could be passing something and creating an, an adverse effect for the business, for the contractors because of something that might happen.
So, and, and you can, I'm sorry, if you can, you can ask the attorney. But the wonderful thing about the Town Council form of government is that when we pass an order, it's not set in stone. We can go back and revise the order at some other meeting if there's an adverse effect, or if there's something else. There's an exception in here, and sending it to public safety, I would expect that the committee would have the same discussions with the fire chief, the police chief, the, the senior center director, and some, some others that would be affected by it, and the clerk of the works, and anybody else. That's, that's why it's introduced, to have that conversation, and to get an active opinion going here about, you know, is it, is it thing. I've heard from a lot of seniors that are concerned about construction traffic going on Wally Kruger Way, which had been, for the most part, a dead-end road servicing the senior center and the, and the health center there.
That's a point well taken, but eventually, you're, you're going to have buses going by there all, all day, or most of the day, when it's all done. While they're reconstructing the, the access road, there's going to be construction vehicles. There's going to be a point of construction where there is going to be some inconvenience to the senior center at some point. You know, I, I don't know. Well, I mean, this is an issue really, I don't know who decides. I mean, there's the, there's the school building committee that be involved in this? Is it the police chief? Is it the fire chief? I mean, I don't think an order needs to be created to say, "Well, don't use that road." I mean, I would think that those that are in charge of the project can certainly direct a certain day to say, "Why don't you come in off South Street?" Instead of it always being off South Street. But anyway, I'm sure we can have more discussion on this. I don't have a problem referring it to public safety. Councilor Loesch?
Right.
Oh, I was just going to add, too, that I understand Councilor Wood's concerns, and I know that through the process of talking about school construction, there was a lot of concern with the senior center. And I think that that's being addressed by the project manager right now as we speak and discuss it. So I think public safety can get all the stakeholders together in a room, maybe short of an order, come to an agreement as to traffic and how to mitigate that, both on side roads and Wally Kruger Way. So I anticipate we'll be able to get that done.
Well, let's, let's set it to committee and, and let the discussion happen.
So there is a motion, and there's a second to refer to public safety. Any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes. Or no?
Opposed, is any, okay.
Correct.
Text to one, yep. Okay, I guess we're almost done. Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens here wishing to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting?
Harry Bailey, on behalf of my daughter and myself, I'd like to thank you for the common vic license approved tonight. I personally would like to thank you for the six years that the town manager, myself, many other people, Councilor Wood, have put into Styles and Hart to get this parking lot. The plan is to go from the parking lot down to the first quarry with gravel, so that wheelchairs and handicapped accessible put in some kind of dock, so that they can actually go fishing in there. There are bass in that first quarry, so. On the jake break, Councilor Chase and Mr. Columbotus are right. If the trucks are doing the speed limit, there's no need for them to be hitting the jake break. I live between Faith Chapel and the police station. The speed limit is 25. Nobody, but nobody does 25. If the truck is doing 25, they don't have to hit the jake break, and then stop before they hit the police station. And that's the same on all the town roads. I don't see any use for them to do it, especially at 4 o'clock in the morning, 5 o'clock in the morning. The bedroom in my house is 16 feet off the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting? Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll start with council comments on my far left with Mr. Columbotus.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Ms. Loesch?
Just sending gratitude for everyone who participated in the Christmas parade, as well as Christmas on the Common. We beat the snow. It was a great parade.
The banner was out. The banner was out.
Yes. Mr. Gallagher's banner was beautiful.
People knew who we were. Mr. Rushton, no comments. Mr. George?
I'd like to reiterate the thank you for everyone that put together Christmas on the Common. And I do have to say, after we were done with the parade, walking around the Common with all of the vendors, Santa, the, you know, the, the whole vibe of that was really nice. And I know that trying to do something on a consistent basis is a yeoman's task. But I think it does kind of reiterate that being able to do something on the Common that attracts more people to downtown, even if for a short period of time, I think is a worthwhile venture, and can really help us stimulate the downtown growth. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
I thought the band sounded great. Band has grown in size over years. You know, when, when the economy went sour back in 2008, the band was pretty much nothing, and it's come back in a big way. I was a band kid myself. They sounded great. The vendors were great. I liked the, the parade. And we lead into the summer. I will say that the, the Christmas season, we will say, support your local businesses. It's very important that we support our local businesses, the new food venue that's opening up, some of our local restaurants, local businesses like Bridgewater Farm Supply, Hanson Farm, the other fundraisers like Bridgewater Community Lines, who are selling Christmas trees, the Boy Scouts who will collect the Christmas trees, and everything else in between. You know, things that happen locally stay locally, so it's, it's all good. Thank you.
Mr. Chase?
Hopefully, everyone has fared well in our first significant winter storm, although it's actually not great winter yet, is it? But nonetheless, I was out clearing my own driveway this morning, having forgotten, you know, what a difficult chore that is. And I was very grateful to have the help of a neighbor who pitched in, particularly at the, right at the street level, where, where plows had kind of deposited a great mound of snow. And I, I did witness a number of other occasions of neighbors helping neighbors. And I think it's just the kind of, an instance that causes me to remember.
And I think it's just the kind of an instance that causes me to remember just what it is that's so enjoyable about our town. The fact that, I think that there's a great willingness on the behalf of many people to, to pitch in, in occasions like this and, and just lend a hand. And so thank you to my own neighbor and to all who may have done such an act of kindness throughout the town today.
I so want to thank all those that put together the Christmas on the Common and the parade this year. Everything went very, very well. It was a very festive afternoon in Bridgewater. I want to thank the town manager and the staff in here that made our building look a little more festive this year than in the past. Job well done. Looks very nice. I also want to say it was nice to attend the, the Parkland meeting a couple weeks ago and the ideas that Kitty had already presented as far as the Parklands go down the road. I think that with the approval of the, the funding tonight to open up the Styles and Hart area for parking and so forth, I think in a few years, hopefully, we'll, we'll have more access to these parks in Bridgewater, which I think will be a very nice addition to this community. And on that note, our next meeting is two weeks from tonight, December 17th, right here at 7:30. We do not have any, any executive session this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.